Mayor's room is a little bit late, so we'll just get started with the work session. And the first one on the list of the work session is Mr. Thompson, Mr. Robert Thompson. He's an architect out of Birmingham, and he has been doing the work, the architect work, on the Wicked Post Building that we have purchased about back in the fall. So, he's going to go over some stuff with us about bidding this out, about the bid model. So, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Sets that are considered issue forbidden with the Architect and Engineer stamps on it, so they're ready to go out for pricing to general contractors. What we want to do is make sure we have a fair and proper and complete bid in the process. So, toward that end, I have created a... What's in this packet is an invitation to bid. There is a... There's an invitation to bid, there are instructions to bidders, and there are also the actual bid forms that we can have the contractor use. The invitation for bid basically just gives a very basic instructions on where to pick up suitments, in very general terms what the project's about, also of course when the bid would be. And that's something that has not been established yet, of course, on the question marks in that portion of it that we can discuss now or whenever y'all are ready to discuss when the bid should actually be.
Okay, a question up there, Kyle. Bidding something this size, what is the length of time that needs to be gave to the contractor so they can have the proper time to get their bidding? How's it like 30 days or...
I would say between three and four weeks. Either one of those, you know, three weeks is a little bit on the lean side, four weeks is plenty. And they don't certainly help with that.
So, when we set the, when we put it out to bid tonight, we'll set that date and time that far out we'll put it?
I would recommend from tonight, maybe somewhere in the four week range, because it may take a little bit of time for the contractors to discover that the project's out there from tonight, and that would still give them plenty of time. Even if it took them a week to hear about it, they would still have pretty much in which they may have a bid. And the... So, this tells basic information about what is required of the bidders as far as bonds and the fact that they need to be registered contractors and such. And a little bit about the bid period. It also explains how to get the drawings, which I've said that there will be sets available at the city hall. Also, I welcome any contractor or anyone to just email me and they can have a EEF, electronic copy of the drawings as well. And I don't charge for those, there's no deposit or anything if that's all they want. If they want a printed set of drawings, they need to have a hundred dollar returnable deposit if they are not below bidder. And they bring back the drawings and the drawings are in good enough shape that the low bidder can use them, they get for a hundred dollars back. But if they don't come back, they don't bring the drawings back, but they bring them back in poor shape, city arrange will can just keep that hundred dollar check up. And so, that's the invitation for bid. There are instructions to bidders here about what documents they need to bring with them to the bid, or they need to have it in their bid package. We typically require bids to be in a sealed envelope, on the exterior is simply the project name, their contractor number, their general contractor's license number on the exterior. And once they open it up, they need to have the bid form itself. And the, what's called a non collusion affidavit, which means they haven't got together with the other contractors and have rated, which is standard operating kind of form. And then a bid bond, which means if they put a bid on this project, we're going to honor the bid, or they're going to re-sign the contract. You would not want someone to come in and be below bidder. You start negotiating with them, they say, "Oh, you know what, I can't really do this project," and then you guys are back to square one. So, bid bond is a short line for that. There's also a statement of bidder's qualifications, we just want to make sure that they have that, and then a qualification in order to bid this project. And then there's a statement of compliance with Alabama Code Section 31139 about the use of undocumented partners and state's landowners. Anybody in this project must be documented. And that's a statement that we typically suggest that each municipality utilize that as well. So, that's what the instructions to bidders has in this. And then there's the actual bid form that we recommend, or actually instruct bidders to do. It has the basic information about who they are, what their sum is. I have put in a date for project completion. That certainly can be discussed and changed, but I've suggested 120 calendar days for when we'll be able to construct the project. And that should be plenty for this project. But if y'all want to talk about that, when we change that, those amount of days, that certainly will follow to it. I think most contractors will struggle to do anything for, in less than 90 days, just simply because poor materials, the way certain things can't be done until other things are completed. So, but 120 days could be changed if you'd like. I put in something called liquidated damages, which is typical on a municipal project in which for every day the contractors are late after the contract is not in time, they oversee, in this case, I've written in a hundred fifty dollars for that. And that simply just keeps the contractor from planning the bidding. We want to make sure they do have ample time in the beginning, so we would not want to squeeze them too tight on the amount of days that they have available. But if we give them an ample amount of time, they should, they should not have reason to overrun that time. So, that's what there is. They acknowledge addendum, what addendums are, or any kind of supplementary information that I'm going to give based on requests from y'all during the bid period, or an error of a wish, or a mission that I see in my drawings. I'm looking through theirs, you know, I forgot to tell them about some of our mission addendum. Well, the most common addendum is when contractors call and ask a question. If they call and ask a question about the drawings and I feel like clarification would actually help the bid factor on issuing the addendum, saying in response to a question, so and so, here's some additional information. And so, we want them to make sure they acknowledge that they received y'all's addendum. I'll send out notification that addendums have gone out, and they need to acknowledge that they've gotten them. And then it talks about bid bonds. There is an attachment in here that's the non collusion affidavit, just where he needs to sign and have notarized that they're not colluding with anyone else. Bid bond is the same, they need to be able to have a bond for the bid process. There's statement of qualifications, and also there's statement of compliance with Alabama Code Section 31139. So, that is the actual bid form. So, what we expect to see on bid day is a sealed envelope, and basically this in it that's totally filled out, as they're out, and then sealed in there. And then what I'll do, once the bids are taken, we'll look them over, we'll look at the low price. We want to take the low bidder, but we need to spend a little bit of time to make sure the low bidder really has done everything properly. I'll need to check with the Alabama General Contracting Board to make sure their license is up to date and they're in good standing. We'll need to just look through their paperwork to make sure their bid bond is good and things such as that. In which case then we can enter into the contract negotiation phase with them, as well as signing contracts with them there. What I recommend us have is what's called a pre-bid conference, typically at the project site. And we typically do that, yes, roughly at the halfway point of the bid period, which gives all the potential bidders time to hear about the project and pick up drawings, and be able to get generally familiar. But we meet at the site, and that gives them time to ask questions, and me to be able to answer questions, and then them to be able to put, if there's any kind of additional information given, be able to get that priced and put in. So, we don't have to select the exact bid date and time yet, but once we put this out, we'll need to come up with a bid time and we can alert the potential bidders of anything, pre-bid conference. That's kind of the process and the forms available. And we can do this a couple of different ways. If y'all want to decide upon the bid date and bid time, and also the location of where the bids would be open, we would need to add the invitation for bid to reflect that. And I can do that and send it back up to you, or I would also, I would have sent you just a document, if y'all want to add that up here and simply send it out. Also, I was not sure which publications y'all would like to put this in, whichever publications. Usually at the very end of this, I will write, it's run uncertain, whichever publication. So, if we put that there and a potential bidder sees this from someone else and say, "Okay, well, that one is so and so publication." So, that's really what we need. The only thing that's left to be decided upon before you're actually ready to issue it is when and where, what date and what location would you like for the bids to occur. And then I think we'll be ready to go.
We do plan to set that date, don't we?
Yeah. If we're going to bid it out, we need to set that date, and probably wouldn't hurt to have that, you know, middle date to where you're going to get the contractor together and go over everything like that on that particular day too. We can set those dates tonight too. You set my phone. Any more questions?
One more thing, we had talked about just in passing, possibly bid in two phases. Are we still going to try to do all at one time, or do them both at separate?
Excellent point. I did, I'd like to mention, and I put in the drawings and in the instructions to bidders that we have something called an alternate, which is alternate number one, which is the, what I call kind of the western portion, which includes the council chambers. We have base bid, what we call base bid and then alternates. And base bid is what they have to price and turn as their base amount. And then alternates can be any number of things that you guys want to either add, show as an add alternate or a read alternate. What I put in these drawings is the entire western half of this project, which includes the council chambers, would be an alternate number one. So, that you'll get a lump sum price for doing the eastern half of it, and then another lump sum alternate price to do the western portion of it.
And if we was to combine those two, that would be the cumulative price for all of it.
Exactly, that's right. One thing to keep in mind is that if you get an alternate price now and elect not to do it, it'll probably be a little bit more expensive to do later because the contractor can, he can almost do both sides of this project as quickly as he could do one side. So, if he does it, it's two separate projects. The wait for time would be longer, so there'll be more fees associated with him, his business. But you guys will certainly have that option at the bid opening time and at the bid, when we're looking at the bids after the bid period, to accept alternate one or not accept alternate one.
Okay, thank you. Is there, do you want to house them in for it as far as that pre-bid conference date?
I think if we do that roughly two weeks out from now, kind of during that week, my week this week opens, so y'all are welcome to select a date there. Typically, for whatever reason, I hear from contractors that Mondays and Fridays are terrible days to do those, and so it's like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and most often, they intend to be like Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that's the same kind of with bids themselves. Most often tend to happen on Tuesdays and Thursdays. There's never a requirement that, but it seems like that's more comfortable with many contractors.
Are we looking at posting this invitation to bid as early as tomorrow?
Yes.
And then if we did a, it would be a 30 day period, but if we was to have the bid opening at not our first meeting in August, but our second meeting in August, that'd be the 17th. And that would be a period of 27 days. That's 27 days. Would that be enough time for a...
In my opinion, that's enough time if the bid, invitations go out and are published tomorrow or the next day, or within the next three days or so, that should be enough time in my opinion.
Well, we want to set it for one week after that.
What can you do though? The first meeting on the third, that would be the council meeting.
September?
Yeah. August.
Why are you holding by the halfway mark? He said the Tuesday, so that would be the fourth.
Oh, the fourth is on the...
Before Dan said, take his recommendation of the Tuesday.
Do the pre-bid conference on the fourth and the bid openings on the actual 17th?
And then just select a time of day as well, and I could just, whatever time suits y'all. Preferably maybe not at the AM, because I'm a gentleman. But I can do that, if that actually does work best for y'all, that's okay with me.
Or the bid opening?
Or pre-bid, either. Generally, we see them like at 10 o'clock or 2 o'clock. Zins would be a kind of a typical. Once again, it's no, there's no rule that you have to do with them, but that's a very common time of day to happen. But they can be at other times as well.
Well, to give you a little bit more time beginning, I'd probably say 2 o'clock instead of 10 o'clock.
And if y'all do need to change that, let me know, and I can adjust my schedule.
And as far as the bid opening, we don't do that beginning of our council meeting, 5:30?
Sometimes on something this big, you might want to have that opening at a different time, sort of a couple of too much times to talk to people. But if we didn't, we would have to tie it down to 8:00.
And that's a good point. Oftentimes at a bid opening, we'll simply sit around the table, all the contractors have put in their bids, and we simply open them, read them, and say, "Thank y'all, very glad," and we just hold them up and go. We don't issue any kind of declaration, we simply open and read across the public record and write each bidder's bid. And then that can be the end of it for that time period. So, if you wanted to do it at 10 or 2 on another day, you can do that, and you're not obligated to continue on with it.
Then at the next council meeting, you can approve the bid in...
Do y'all have any time suggested for the bid opening?
I don't, I don't really, but I was just, I just know it takes a little bit of time. Usually, everybody picks on time.
Should we just do it at 4, 4:30?
We still wouldn't be able to accept it that night.
No, because they have to go over, you have to go over, like, make sure everything's...
Can you bid at 30 minutes, or I think an hour?
Easily at an hour, probably would even...
Why don't we set it for 4, and then the Sunday, we can come a little early and open the ears and go from there. And then whatever's convenient for you guys on that pre-bid conference, will you know more about contractors who come?
Yes, August 4th, they either 10 or 2 is perfectly fine, if you suggest 2, but that's okay with me.
2, yeah.
Okay. And so, the bid opening date was which? Maybe that's 17th? I'll be available to answer any questions if y'all are looking through these and have any kind of questions, certainly that would be my answer.
We appreciate you coming up, appreciate it.
Very happy to do that. Absolutely. If y'all want this additional copy, I can be there just in case someone needs additional copies.
Thank you.
You get to see one. All right, go ahead, Eddie.
At 5:30, we've got a bid opening for tractor. We have two bids, one for Snee Dag and one for Wookin. And that's all I have.
I'm going to make a motion that we amend the budget. We had a work session with our accountant last week, and these are the recommendations from her, that we balance all the accounts out. So, I'm going to make a motion to amend the budget from our worksheet that she has. That's all I have.
Okay, four things I'll be real quick with them, we'll discuss these more during the meeting. One is restructuring the fire department where we utilize part-time labor and as the chief to a 40-hour Monday through Friday position, maintain a staff of two per shift with this, but there will be some savings somewhere in there, about $50,000 to the general fund. The second thing would be to add an extra hour for Officer Hoffman, Bowen on the night shift, and let them be a shift commander or leader for that shift. The third thing is to ask authorization from this council to use Raymond James as an underwriter for a $1.5 million bond issued and paid off over 15 years. That bond would be used to pay for renovations of the Wicked Post Building, the municipal pool, and $300,000 debt owed on the Agri Center and the Shelby's and Blue's Bridge projects. And the next thing would be a roll-off truck for the sanitation department. Our current roll-off truck is out of commission. It is a, in the shop without, the clutch is going out on it. We would have two options here. We can bid this one out right here, this spec sheet that Mr. Ricky Gobbins had found for us, or could use the emergency provision and go ahead and purchase the roll-off truck, probably whichever one this council needs, the most efficient way of handling this matter. Those would be the four items that I have for this meeting. But do we have a moment before we go into the meeting? I just, we didn't have a few people here from Maple Street.
We'll take a couple minutes up. Who is it from Maple Street, this drive? Maple Avenue? Okay. I don't know the situation, I haven't heard anything about it, so can y'all catch me up till you put up on that?
Well, they, I guess I'll stay. The mayor's here, we, you know, we left for it to be paid, you know, over the years. We went to a city council meeting a few years ago, and I, it's, we, apparently it doesn't... My house popped fire a few weeks ago, and the fire trucks, you know, just went right past, and I had to chase them down. And that's been an ongoing issue with 911, with police, and with Martha, so, you know, security system went off, then they couldn't find the house. And so, we feel like that the house, I mean, that the, you know, should be paid because there's seven or eight houses on the, on the street now, and, and the issue in finding it, you know, with 911. So, we talked to Nick, I mean, the mayor, and he was going to find out some information about the actual, I'm not saying it right, but the, what am I trying to say, Kelly? That where it was on the, on the, the move to the...
The plan.
Yeah, to locate for this project.
Most of the time in that, the street has to be brought up to a code, like a certain code.
But it was.
Was it?
Yeah, but...
It's Sam Phillips. See, if you find the Sam's one, it usually inspects that.
Well, the mayor was supposed to get with Sam and gives a call back, and, well, we left it, when we went to visit him the other night, we left it at, well, if we don't, you know, he would call us back. We didn't hear from him, and so, you know, we, I was mistakenly under the impression that we could just stay on the agenda to come to the meeting and bring it up, but I didn't know that it, you know, but that's where we stand, we just, you know, we would, we would like to find out, you know, because we did have it, it was, you know, up to specs at one time, but so many years have gone by that, and the Brooks's are not here. Just to bring you up to speed, to kind of fill you in on what happened.
Because I hadn't heard anything about this.
I understand that. We bought property, this was a farm, and I can't tell you the gentleman's name, it's a farm that's subdivided into tracts, auctioned off. We bought property at the back of the farm. This is a dated right-of-way for us to get to our property. When we built the road, the other property owners had gone in together, we built the road together. At the time, now this is 15 years ago. We were told if we built it to spec, if we had it paved or tar and gravelled then, that the city would take it over. Okay. Since that time, that never happened. The specs changed, the administration changed, all of that. What Ms. Randolph is referring to, our addresses are Maple Avenue. The road is not, there is no signage that says Maple Avenue, although it is an annex portion of Maple Avenue. So, that's kind of where we stand. There's seven houses on this case project of this street that we're referring to.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It really and truly, it needs to be inspected by Sam, and making some kind of recommendation to us. And it needs to be brought in the city somehow to be able to get it worked out somewhere.
Would we be responsible for contacting Mr. Phillips, or is that something that you ...
I think it's us, I think we need to let him go with it.
Did he talk to him that day?
Yes.
So, my old man called back.
Yes, I called him.
Okay.
And the mayor is probably already talked to, but I don't know.
And see, another thing is the garbage truck comes down to my house and backs up in my driveway and turns around, and, you know, that's ruining my driveway. I mean, I don't mind, it's still it's, you know, it's still eventually, the wear and tear is not good on my driveway, so, and that's both of the cul-de-sac that we need to be in there.
Yeah, they've upgraded that cul-de-sac to the larger one, and I can't remember about it. For those garbage trucks to turn around on it has to be a pretty good size. 100...
I believe it's 100 foot high.
100 feet.
Yeah, they don't turn wood either.
No.
There's also, we give a turning radius for paying a stewardess also, if it needed to access that area.
So, you're saying that it was brought up to spec and you tar and gravelled it?
No. It was not, it was not tar and gravelled, because what happened, like I said, it was a dated right-of-way for my house, for our property. But there were other people who bought tracts that had joined it. So, we had the agreement with those property owners that if we all went in together and built the road, paid for the cost of the road, then we would go back and have it tar and gravelled. Well, at that point, they sold their property, but the new owners were not interested in participating, so it never happened. And that's where we are now. And since then, I've said, because my impression of the specs for the city, your requirements have changed, so I'm sure the road is still on it. You know, depending on how that is, I don't know.
And I don't know, I don't remember the year, but it was tar and gravelled, so much churn, ditched, and...
Right.
And it went to asphalt.
I think that's why...
And then, then a few years later, it went back to tar and gravelled, because it was so expensive for people to do them, we went back to tar and gravelled. So, it's back to tar and gravelled now.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. So, it makes it a little bit easier to try and fix some of it.
Okay. Yeah, we'd just like to know what our options are, you know, what can't be done, what can't be done.
All right. Well, I'm not sure that I called Sam for long, but Nick may already have one, so we'll go there. Anybody?
I can check for 911 to get that traded out. Just make sure all the addresses. Y'all later in the season. It may be a situation where we might have to rename that street.
Well, I always thought that was a good idea. At least put a sign, you know, with a GPA stamp house, how many people try to come to my house and they're like, "Oh, we're on Maple Avenue, you're not here." Well, yeah, just get some...
At least tell them your names on it.
Yeah, exactly. You know, at least the sign that says, you know, "I love you," that the street, that is Robin.
So, there's a, right now, there's a, there's a...
Because I give my addresses to so...
There's so much more than the first story.
We got to bid on it, we got to do so, we're going, we'll get on that and work on that too, and see what we come up with.
So, we, we just have somebody contact, contact you.
Yeah, I will.
Once, once it, she takes it over.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Okay. First thing on the, 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 is to open these bids. But you got these open.
We have one bid from Sneadag for the amount of sixteen eight. And the bid from Boykin Tractor is seventeen three eighty five. So I'm going to make a motion that we go to Sneadag and purchase the tractor for a payment.
I second that.
Here we have a motion, a second to accept the, uh, the bid of sixteen eight from Sneadag on favor of that.
On the favor of that.
Poses.
That's all I have. Can you please, if I was to check if there's any question you want, we will have one back. That's all I have.
We've got two attorneys from out of town here.
So we need to.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation against the city.
We're going to discuss pending litigation and, uh, threaten.
And threaten pending litigation. Time is now five forty. We'll go back into session. Okay, so six ten.
Okay. I will motion go into executive session.
I'll say.
I'll say. Low, power, low, Brandon?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Much obliged.